This thing on to. Are we ready? All right.
Right, on call to order the town of Mont Desert Planning Board Meeting for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And first off, Happy Valentine's Day.
Well, thank you.
All right, well, well, let's kick it off with some introductions and say hi to everybody out there in Zoom land. And let's see, in person tonight, we've got myself, Chair William Panley, and we've got Vice Chair Tracy Loftus Keller. We've got Gail Marshall right here, and we've got Alan Kimerly. And then online, we've got Meredith Randolph. Hi, Meredith. And I'll say hi to you. Hi, Jerry. All right, and everybody knows the drill by now, so let's just get right into it. So we've got first thing is minutes, and I think we really only are ready to review the minutes from the twenty-fourth. That was the chickens and the fence down next to the nor'easter.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
All right. Let's keep going. Switch back over here. All right, tonight we have a public hearing, and is it six oh four? We have two more minutes. Are we getting in trouble for two minutes early, Kim, for the public hearing at six oh five?
Did um, do you have the public notice?
Do I have?
Verify that this was published in the newspapers?
No.
Do you have them?
No. You want me to introduce it first?
I can, yeah.
All right, I can.
The, um, on the agenda is that it's published. So it was published in the London Island on January twenty-fifth. And then it was published again Friday morning in the packet. On February first.
All right. Great. We're one minute early. I'm gonna go for it. All right, item three, we have a public hearing, and the public hearing is the Land Use Zoning and Subdivision Ordinance Amendments for the two thousand and twenty-four Annual Town Meeting on May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And Noel, I'm gonna let you introduce this, but if I understand correctly, we are looking at the first eight amendments tonight.
Correct.
Right, you're on deck, go for it.
Okay. Great. All right. So again, these are maybe one of the articles that the planning board has to vote on to recommend to the warrant committee for passage. So I think the way that we're gonna do this is I'll describe the amendment, all of these will be done on over. And then answer the questions, and you guys can go up or down. That work?
Sounds good.
Excellent.
So the first one. Copy of the amendments, they're on the table.
Just stand over here.
Yes.
So the first one that is, I'm identifying them as articles in the town meeting, we'll probably read three of them, just so you're aware. The article one that we're gonna be looking at is the correction regarding the connections to the public sewer. This is an amendment to the land use ordinance and the town sewer ordinance that clarifies who gets to grant a waiver essentially for connecting to town sewer. So in the land use ordinance, it says planning board and sewer ordinance and city board selectmen. We're correcting the land use ordinance to say border selectmen. So it's now the border selectmen. It typically is the board of selectmen's job to do that anyway, but we're amending that to be more clear in the land use ordinance. Any questions?
Yeah.
I'll ask for any public comment on Article One. All right, none heard, Noel.
Do you wanna vote? Or do you?
Let me see if the board has any discussion on Article One.
Not on.
It's a corrective measure.
It sounds pretty quiet.
You want a motion?
How about a motion?
I move the warrant committee recommend passage of warrant Article One as written.
The planning board is, is the wording of that okay?
It's the planning board.
Makes the recommendation to the warrant committee.
Oh, we're recommending to the warrant committee in there during, all right, so, um, so as amended, I make a motion that the warrant, that the planning board recommended the warrant committee passage of the what's being referred to as warrant Article One.
I'll second it.
Do you want any more description of that? I mean, otherwise we're gonna have to go through each article that's being needed. As long as we're clear what we're talking about.
We're making the recommendation to the warrant committee.
Yes.
Yeah. I believe in the town report, it just says planning board recommends.
And I'll use the title, Corrections Regarding Connections to the Public Sewer, within the motions, if that's okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Tracy Keller, second.
Uh, no, Alan, second.
Alan, sorry.
All right, all those in the room in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and online?
Hi, Randolph.
All right. Article Two, Noel.
Article Two is a proposed amendment to the land use ordinance that changes the setback for lots around Little Echo Lake from one hundred feet to seventy-five feet. It has come to the town's attention that Little Echo Lake is actually a man-made water body that does not require a hundred-foot setback through state mandated shorelines, only rather it requires a seventy-five-foot setback. So the proposal is to just change the remaining lot. There are already some lots on Little Echo Lake that have a seventy-five-foot setback. And this proposal changes the remaining lots that have, currently have a hundred-foot setback to a seventy-five-foot setback.
Great, any comment from the public on this one?
So if you currently have a lot on Little Echo, you can now.
You can be twenty-five feet closer. Yep.
Yeah, but after seventy-five. It doesn't change your setback, it changes the ones that Chef Harris divided. But he said it was on a lot on Echo Lake.
Well, if you're on a lot.
Like, you've always been seventy-five. You guys on that side were, yeah, have always been seventy-five, but the lots that Chef Harris were divided on the other, wait, wait, on the opposite side, those were a hundred feet. So it's ideally just changing those lots that are on that side. Yours won't change.
On the song.
Six lots are included without change.
Any other comments from the public? All right, I guess we need a motion on Article Two.
I move that the planning board recommend to the warrant committee passage of what is referred to as warrant Article Two.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor in the room?
Aye.
Online?
Randolph, aye.
All right. Article Three.
The next one is a article that deals with unregistered motor vehicles. And this one is really a clarification change in LA Dis ordinance under six B seventeen, which already deals with unregistered vehicles. To make it more clear that you can only have two unregistered or unexpected motor vehicles on any lot. Period. If, another scenario would be if you had unregistered motor vehicles, you can't have more than two without being considered an automobile graveyard. And that's not, I knew that's a lot in town, so just maybe.
Okay, any discussion of, from the public on this one, Article Three? All right.
So if I have more than two cars and I fail to inspect them, but because I'm not using them, I'm considered a graveyard?
Yep.
And that's for state law?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then what?
You have to either move store or inspect it.
Then what happens?
Break it if they're antique and I'm not.
Well, then it's.
Antique's different. You have to make this turn as an antique.
If you don't comply, they tell them.
You have to register it or inspect it. They don't want it for it not to be counted.
There was a consideration of having vehicles inside of the garages not count. Now, I guess I, I do know an awful lot of people, including my own spouse, that enjoys collecting vehicles, and there lots of ones around that aren't necessarily registered as projects are being developed. I, I don't know that there's anybody present that would have a problem with this, but I, I think that there are people in the town Mainers laying to do it themselves, that do collect vehicles for parts and stuff. As they're doing.
You're gonna collect them, then you have to be registered as a hobbyist through the state of Maine and get a license through there, or you have to register or inspect them. You can't, you can't store a bunch of vehicles on your vehicle, on your property without a registration or, and or inspection. Or license through the state of Maine.
They can be inside a building in that.
No.
Seems to me like if they were inside of a building, it, I, it wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, what happens if you have a parts car or something and?
Then you become, then you become an automobile repair business.
But what happens if you're a hobbyist and you have?
You gotta get licensed through the state of Maine.
Yeah.
To be a hobbyist, to, to just put together vehicles?
Yes.
If I have a super rare car and I need two parts cars to?
It sounds like we're debating state law, which is not anything that we can do anything about.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, what we could debate is, I guess, I, I just, I don't know, all, we're, we're being told that, I just I've seen an awful lot of it.
We can't be less stringent than the state of Maine.
We can be more, not less.
Right, but I'd like to see more clarification of what the state of Maine says. Because I thought we started off saying that it, that it was inside of garage, or you know, inside of buildings, didn't, didn't qualify, and then there was sort of a oh, well, that just makes it complicated.
No, that was changed.
Dr. Musson? The change said, it really just takes out the provision that says unless said vehicles cannot be viewed from any public way, which is consistent with what the state says as well. But we can bring back more information if the board so chooses. We've had this discussion a few times at the land use committee also.
Title thirty-eight, section three seven five-two, definitions. Automobile graveyard means a yard, field, or other outdoor area used to store three or more unregistered or uninspected motor vehicles as defined in Title twenty-nine. A, section one oh one, subsection forty-two are parts of the vehicles. Automobile graveyard includes an area used for automos, automobile dismantling, salvage, and recycling operations. It does talk in this description that I'm reading from about an outdoor area. So I whether that's, that's a nineteen eighty-nine law is, is got pulled up by the oracles at Google, Google, so has that been amended?
No.
So if that's not been amended, that refers to outdoor. Means if yard, field, or other outdoor area.
People buy vehicles as, as, you know, because of their value and might store them for years, not with any interest of driving or anything, but just as, as a a collection of, as a valuable.
It goes on to say automobile graveyard does not include an area used for temporary storage of vehicles or vehicle parts by an establishment or place of business that is primarily engaged in doing vehicle repair work and so on. An area used by, number two, an area used by automobile hobbyists to store, organize, restore, or display antique autos, antique motorcycles, classic vehicles, horseless carriages, reconstructed vehicles, street roads, or particles vehicles, as those vehicles are defined in twenty-nine, section one oh one, as long as the hobbyist activities comply with all applicable federal, state statutes, rules, and municipal ordinances other than ordinances that are more restrictive than the subsection regarding the storage of vehicles or vehicle part, parts that are collected by hobbyists, except that a municipal ordinance may I'm sorry, I lost track there. The, the short of it is it raises some questions about what we're required to do.
Happy to seek clarity.
Sorry about that, but unless what I, I Googled Maine automobile graveyard, and that's the statute that came up at the time of Title thirty-eight.
To hope that you could have more freedom to do, to be, have an interest in vehicles, if you, if it doesn't become an eyesore, and if the, the inside versus outside seems to me significant, and for the town to go above and beyond the state and say you can't even have them, you can't even take up a collection inside seems unfair.
I mean, the rub is always that one person's hobby is another person's eyesore in these kind of situations.
And but if you keep it, keep it inside.
Yes, yes.
That's why he's saying is it has to be inside.
That is one question that's raised by what I'm reading, which may or may not be, I wouldn't call this a definitive search what I'm doing right here.
Let's pause. We have the fourteen, I mean, the twenty-eight.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. All right, that was Article Three, and we're pressing the pause button, moving on to Article Four, Individual Private Campsites.
Yes, this change is to the land use ordinance, section six B nine, which deals with individual private campsites, and also the definition of individual private campsites. So that it makes some clarification statements about how big of a lot we have to have regarding lots that are in the shoreline zone. And also what is it, what the definition of an individual private campsite is, it's more consistent with the state shoreline zoning standards and what an individual private campsite actually is. So it's already allowed in town. We're just separating out a couple of things and adding a definition that's more consistent with state.
Any public comment on Article Four? Gail?
I move the warrant committee recommend to, the planning board recommend to the warrant committee passage of Article Four as presented.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor in the room?
Aye.
Aye, online?
Randolph, aye.
All right. Article Five.
Article Five, this is a change to the table of, um, yes, it's second, three point four, table of the land uses. That essentially just makes the top two things on the list of dwelling units, one and two, and dwelling multiple changes the term so that it's more consistent with the term that's actually a defined term in the ordinance. So there is no such thing as dwelling one and two, it's actually a residential dwelling one family and residential dwelling two family. And there's no such thing as a dwelling common multiple, it's a residential dwelling multi-family. So it's just a correction, this change is just a correction to be consistent with defined terms.
Any questions from the public?
You know, you can write down on your list of things that we should change would be the actual terminologies away from residential, one dwelling, one family, and two family, and residential dwelling multi-family, just call it a duplex or a mobile thing, but that's next year.
Okay. You want a motion? I move the planning board recommend the warrant committee passage of Article Five as presented, except for the correction of the spelling on residential. Thank you.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor in the room?
Aye.
Aye, online?
Randolph, aye.
Article Six, Noel.
Article Six, this is a correction in section five point four of the condition of use approval, section of the ordinance, which just clarified that it's actually the town that sends notices regarding public buildings for conditional use approval meetings, rather than the planning board.
All right, any public comment on this one? Not hearing any.
I move the planning board recommend to the warrant committee pass, passage of Article Six as written.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor in the room?
Aye.
Aye, online?
Randolph, aye.
All right, Article Seven.
Article Seven is an amendment to the land use ordinance to be more compliant with LD two thousand and three, which is the new state law regarding houses, housing units, and also affordability and accessory dwelling units in particular. This change reorganizes the section two of that ordinance, which deals with residential dwelling one family and two family and multi-family dwelling units, to be more clear how that's awarded, and then adds some standards for accessory dwelling units. So the town already allows accessory dwelling units. This does not take away that allowance, it actually just sort of, it clarifies what needs to be considered dwelling units. And uses language that's in consistency with the LD two thousand and three. But in, in particular, there's a minimum size of, I think, accessory dwelling in LD two thousand and three. So we added that in, but we kept the maximum size, which was and is currently seventy-five percent of the principal structure. Our primary lot, sorry.
Got it. Any public comment on this one, Article Seven? None heard.
May I ask if, should, if I raise a question with you of whether we should add the actual title, the actual statute to this, because LD two thousand and three is what it's funneling on this, but that's a legislative document that no longer really exists because it's now a thirty-eight, it's a law. So should we add that in the explanation?
We can.
Maybe that should be in the thirty-eight MRSA, section four three six four A, I believe. But don't call me. So I'll make the motion. I move that the planning board recommend to the warrant committee passage of warrant Article seven.
Second that. All right, all those in favor in the room?
Aye.
Aye, online?
Randolph, aye.
All right. Article Eight, Noel.
Article Eight is an amendment to section seven of the land use ordinance, which deals with procedural administrative procedures for permits. And this is a clarification that the code officer wants to get, when they get a permit application, they have thirty days to determine whether or not that application is complete. That's currently in the ordinance. And then this just clarifies that after the applicant, application is determined to be complete, there's ten days, they have ten days to issue the.
What happens if it's not completed in thirty days?
Then the code officer, if, if it's not completed, they have thirty days to determine whether or not it's complete. If they determine within that time it's not complete, they can ask for more information, and it's not complete application.
Got it. Any comments for the public on Article Eight?
Also, sorry.
Yeah.
To add, under seven six, we did add, we clarified that the current term in the ordinance is called ten working days, or using term business days.
All right, any public comment? None heard.
So just to clarify, in the referral section, that will be changed so that all the language would be business days?
Yeah.
So I move that the planning board recommend to the warrant committee passage of warrant Article H as altered to reflect consistent days.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor in the room?
Aye.
Aye, online?
Randolph, aye.
That was the end of all of the land use articles that were advertised for tonight. Just as a preview for the forty-eight, in case anybody's fired up for another public meeting. We're gonna be talking about the remaining land use articles that are related to the planning. And that would be, we have some changes to the ones that deal with certificates of occupancy.
You can do that one, that's on the list.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
We can do that one.
All right.
That was extended for tonight, yes.
Okay.
Do it.
All right, we have a bonus article tonight, Article Nine. Certificates of occupancy. Noel, tell us about that.
So this one is a change in addition to the land use ordinance that is taking the language in the town's current building ordinance, which is no longer valid because of the back rules. And so we already, the town already requires a certificate of occupancy, we're taking the language from an invalid ordinance and putting it into the lax ordinance. There's also some standards in here which are more, obviously more updated as it relates to manufactured modular homes and tiny homes.
All right, any public comment on Article Nine? None heard.
I move that the planning board recommend to the warrant committee passage of warrant Article nine as presented.
Second that.
All right, all those in favor in the room?
Aye.
Aye, online?
Randolph, aye.
Would they get the Murray instructor one, or you still want them on?
I don't even know if they've got that one yet. So my intention is to make sure you guys have. The non, did you send them out?
Yeah, I'm sure they got that.
Is that?
They got the non-performing section, and we, yes, the zoning home that they talked about, but yeah, pretty sure you got the non-performing section, right?
You mean the beach hill?
No. About the jurisdiction with non-performing structures, did you guys get that? Where within two thirty, within a water body, you guys have jurisdiction to review how performing.
No, I don't, I have the change in the land use district, and I have the permitted, conditional, and excluded uses by district, and the definitions.
Here's what I suggest. I'm gonna go over the list. And I suggest we hold the last things that are on my list until the twenty-eighth. That one is where. Nope. Those aren't getting changed.
No, I know they can't change them.
Yep. So we have lot access. And we could go over the non-performing.
You want to?
Yeah, so Kim and I have been working with the E and P body because they had some concern about lot, a lot access provision under six P eleven, which we had changed the last year or the year before. As the intent is to try to make it easier for people with non-performing roads and driveways to continue to access their lot. So there's a, the current ordinance, as you know, allows for people to come to the planning board and ask for road standards, favors, through the subdivision ordinance. So there's a current ordinance of, as you know, allows for people to come to the planning board and ask for road standards favors through the subdivision ordinance. Some of those standards for for lots that are created, you know, prior to two thousand fifteen, I believe. Uh, and so currently, the the code enforcement officer and the fire chief can weigh in on some of that stuff to to add some flexibility. But according to our lawyers, uh, that's not. A good practice, so we need to change it. And in doing so, um, going through this conversation, we, Tim and I were like, are we, it seems like we're really overthinking this whole road access thing. This whole driveway thing. So we're working on trying to simplify the lot access provisions, which would continue to allow people to use not performing. To access lots of nonperforming roads or driveways. So we're working on that. Hopefully that'll make things easier. But it's this seems to be a not going problem. And I cannot find in any other town where it's an issue.
Mm hmm.
Um, just proving once again.
There's some unique challenges in my dessert. That's what it says in the device. Um. The other another ordinance that you're going to see, I think I've mentioned this before, but uh there's a few definition changes and deletions like uh we, there's still a definition on the just ordinance for airline excite strips. But we took that out of the ordinance last year, so we don't need that in there. We're just gonna do that.
Just take it off the checklist.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep it all those things on the checklist, but and we're waiting for you and P body to give us uh their reviewing the definition of. I can hold that, I believe. Just to make sure it's consistent with the law.
Um, that's what you're currently calling warrant article eleven.
Yes, yeah. What I'm currently calling war warrant article twelve. Um, is the repeal and replacement of the subdivision ordinance. Which um looking through a couple of final changes to that. Uh, in integrated Gail's good comments from our last meeting. Um, what I'm calling warrant article thirteen is a clarification on marine freshwater structures. Um, if if you look at section sixty seven in the land use ordinance, there's a lot of. In not, it's not even, it's a confusion. There's in one section at the beginning, it says you have to have. Uh, conditional use approval for all marine structures. And then later in the thing, it says you have to have the conditional use approval for marine structures. And then in the definition, it defines marine structures as a certain size, but earlier.
Over twenty feet, it says.
Over twenty feet is, uh, so let me start over. At the beginning of sixty seven, it says all marine structures over twenty feet. Have to have.
No, it just says all marine structures in the purpose section of the beginning, but then you go down sixty, sixty seven, and it talks about. It says it's required for. Uh, here it talks more over twenty feet, and then the definition says ten feet.
And actually, the other confusing part is where the commas are in the word. It's it reads piers, docks, wharves, bridges over twenty feet, or bridges over ten feet in the definition. So you could actually interpret that in my mind to be a couple of different things. So. Anyway, sixty, this article basically just clarifies that. All structures over ten feet need to get a condition of security.
Noel, why are ten, eleven, and twelve highlighted?
Those are highlighted because those are the ones that I was waiting for. E and P bodies.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, any questions on that? I mean, it's my explanation is way more confusing than the change. Um, the next article that you're gonna look at is um fourteen, or what I'm calling article fourteen, which is revisions to the nonperforming section of the ordinance that is what Tim just described. Clarify that code enforcement officer can make determinations on noncomporting for setbacks. For lot lines and whatnot, whereas the planning board is responsible for water. Uh, and then um you're not going to deal with the the short term micro vacation licensing ordinance, so you don't have to think about that. Um, as a planning board. And then the last one we need to consider is a last minute uh request by the uh Island Housing Trust. Uh, which you should have a copy of. Which essentially uh changes the rivers road properties um from a. Residential one to a VR two district. The reasoning is that when the actual subdivision was obtained, it was approved under the assumption that it was already. That VR two district because the town had not updated their zoning ordinance maps, their zoning maps. So the zoning map that was. Published at the time hadn't been updated. The record, and incorrect, and the planning board at the time approved the project under the assumption that it was a VR two. Since then, the property's been developed. Uh, they've extended the sewer out there, and it actually does, it already meets the the description of VR two, and I think if you look at that map. Uh, there are no R ones around. It's actually is a VR two area, so it's an extension of that people. So that is something that was been has been requested by. Uh, Island Housing Trust. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that, because this is the first time besides last night that we've ever talked about it.
Are you okay with it going forward? It's kind of a question.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, we're gonna talk about it at the Luzo committee meeting next week. And then you'll see it on the forty eight to vote on.
I mean, it's not surrounded by VR two, but it's definitely adjacent to VR two.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
But what is the uh change uh between R one and VR two that they that they're wanting to? Have access to?
Now VR two, it's well, the development that's there is already approved with the density out of VR two district. So VR two district with sewer is twenty thousand square feet, whereas residential one is only one acre. So there, if they do any modifications to that property, I think currently they're thinking about uh not at, they've already got all the lots approved. But they may want to modify the road layout, the road circulation to make it better. Um, which they have to go to the planning board for, but if they did that, then. It would be a noncompliant subdivision because it's not under the current zoning standards.
It has a whole bunch of lots that don't have the road. It was walk-in lots.
That was the original proposal, yes.
And I'd imagine they're probably having a reality check on it.
Uh, yeah, so I would say they're thinking about if they need to make that modification, and if they do, what's gonna happen is they have to make the right of way wider to meet the road standards. And then they'd have to just, so they have to come in for a modification of the lot, not the density, but the layout of the lots. And whether or not you approve that is a wholly separate question, but it makes it more. Compliant with what was already approved. By the planning board if it were a VR two district.
Is the red line on the Pretty Marsh Road and Beach Hill? Road um where the sewer line is?
Um. It's gonna be about the. No, I think those are just roads.
Yeah.
But I could put the sewer line on there. I didn't do it on this map.
Yeah.
I think that's a like a E nine one one layer.
Okay.
But they have extended sewer.
Mm hmm.
So. I think the question is, is it was kind of a last minute thing, and we added it in. You can vote on it next time.
Yeah, you can't discuss it tonight or or vote on it. It wasn't published because it came in late.
Got it. And they have sewers, no. No, water. Yeah.
Sewer, yeah, they have wells.
I don't think water goes pets. Bridge, so. That's it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Fine work.
Yeah.
We'll get back to your own. Automobile graveyard.
Okay, item four, other. Do we have any other other? Online?
No other, just um. The McQuinn. Freshwater remand. For Meredith, Tracy, and Bill, gonna be March thirteenth.
Mm hmm.
The market calendars.
Noel's.
You all need to be there because.
It's already on there. It's already on there.
Yay.
Are we doing it at six o'clock?
Yes.
Mm hmm.
And we did receive another application for a planning board member. Got it today, so that will. Do you want me to add that to the twenty eighth agenda? You agree? The only, the only thing that's on the agenda is this, again. Luzo articles.
I think we can handle that.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Um, may we ask a question before the meeting ends?
Sure, go for it.
Uh, this is Todd Midland um and Abby Simpson. Uh, this audio is just a little muffled, and I just wanted to clarify. When um the short term licensing. Um. Issue is coming back to the board? Is it coming back on the twenty eighth, or is it deferred beyond the twenty eighth?
So, uh, Todd, that will be discussed uh through the board of selectmen, not the planning board, and I think the public meeting for that is scheduled for March eleventh.
Right, so it's not coming back to the planning board, it's going to selectmen on March eleventh.
I think so. It'll be a public here, a public hearing on March eleventh. That I think that's the date. Yep.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
All right, they should publish the draft online this week, so look online too.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Well, that leaves only one other item on the agenda tonight. The German. Yeah. Any discussion?
No, this is.
Right, all those in the room in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Online?
Randolph, aye.
Good to see you, Meredith.
Good to see you, Bill, and Tracy, and Alan, and Gail.
Happy Valentine's Day. Happy Valentine's Day.